Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for June 2 of 2025. Please rise and I will lead us in prayer. Dear God, we want to start tonight by just thanking you for being able to live in a place where we're safe and free and in this beautiful community that we call Watertown. We ask for you to be in this room with us tonight as we deliberate and try to make the best decisions for the future of Watertown. We ask your blessing on this community and everyone who's living here. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interim City Manager Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Here.
Helene?
Yep.
Jurens?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shetty?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Bruce is on the phone.
Okay.
Bruce, can you hear us? Councilman Bueller? Bueller. Okay. Okay. We got you. Okay, quorum is established. Chair will entertain action to approve tonight's agenda.
Oh, Mayor.
Yep.
Remove 9A.
Oh. Okay, with that change, removal of 9A, now I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, you're on the record. Agenda is established. Now is the time for open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda? We have a good friend with us tonight, State Senator Glenn Vilhauer.
I had to stick my head in this building one last time.
It is our last meeting in this building.
Good to see all of you. I am Glenn Vilhauer. I'm coming to you tonight as your state senator for District 5. District 5 is Watertown proper and the four surrounding townships. This is my first session out in Pierre, and I think in sitting in your shoes over the years, I found out that we don't operate in a vacuum. We've got the city, we've got the school district, we've got the county, and you can't ignore the state delegation as well. And it's critical that we all work together. And I'm just here as a party that wants to work however I can plug in with whatever might be on your agenda, or if I come up with something from the state level that might be a benefit to Watertown. I just want to keep the lines of communication open with all the parties involved. So having said that, I look forward to working with you going forward. And I also want to mention one more thing. This past session, there were probably 10, 15 bills, if not more, that came before us that would have stripped power away from the cities, the school districts, the counties, and that was so hypocritical to what we were hearing from a faction out in Pierre that we want less government oversight, more local control, and these bills would have done exactly the dusty opposite. So I'm a strong proponent of maintaining that local control, and I will fight whenever a bill comes forward that I see taking control away from the entities within our borders here in Watertown and District 5. So I will always be an advocate for District 5, for maintaining that local control. I know we've got a busy agenda, so that's all I want to say tonight, but I do want to make one parting comment. I had a chance to talk to Councilman Danforth, Councilman Bueller. I know that your terms are coming short on the council. I want to thank you for your service over the years. I've been in your spots for, you know, eight years, and I know with some of the things. It looks like you've got an interesting agenda tonight again, too, so I'm glad you're sitting there and I'm sitting out here, so good to see all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Glenn.
All right, unless there is any disagreement with the council, what I would like to do is bounce around the agenda in light of the people who are here tonight. I would like to take up 9B first because I know that we have two of our staff here, and I think we could get them out of the building if we take that item up first, but then I would like to take on the zoning request because, actually, no, wait, I will do the lounge, right? So, and if there's no opposition, I will just do that, so. And actually, I think, how about we change that? I'm going to take on the request, which would be 11A, right? For the, let's see. Yes, 11A? Okay. We're going to do 11A, 9B, and then the 11B. Is there any opposition to me doing that? Thank you for allowing me some leeway in order to accommodate the people who are here in the building. So with that, we are going to go to item 11A, an application for a transfer of ownership and location of a retail liquor license and video lottery license from LRC Hospitality Doing Business as Harry's. And then to Samantha Schwalm Doing Business as The Lounge, 21 North Maple, Harper-Balati Outlook Block 4, Original Platte. We'll go to our interim city manager, Kristin Bobzine, for more information on this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yes, before the council is a transfer of a liquor license and video lottery. Notice has been published, all fees have been paid, everything's in order. I can answer any questions.
All right. I'll open a public hearing on this. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? Piper, you know you want to. Okay. You don't have to testify, but if you did, you sure could. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any questions or comments, council? All right, hearing none, I'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the transfer, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to item 9B, an approval of a bid award for project number 2508 Zoo Improvements to the Wolf Exhibit to Gray Construction Company in the amount of $750,000. We will go to our city engineer, Justin Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is to replace the existing wolf exhibit at the Bramble Park Zoo. We received five bids and Gray Construction was a little bitter. The bids did come in over budget, but with some additional funding from the Zoological Society and Zoo and some scope adjustment, we recommend award to Gray Construction for the contract price of $750,000. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
All right, Dusty or Stacy? Would you like to say anything? Actually, Stacy, why don't you plug it for the community, just so that they know what we're getting? I think it would be good for people to know what we're doing here. Yeah.
All right, so we're looking to remodel our current wolf habitat, so we're going to make the building bigger, we're going to make the yard safer, and then we're going to make it so it's better for our education programs, so people will feel in with the wolves, they'll have a better connection with the wolves, the wolves will display better. So overall, it's going to improve it for the public, for the animals, and then hopefully bring in more guests.
All right, thank you. Stand by in case we have any questions. Can I get a motion to approve the bid award? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Counsel, Councilman Tupper.
Just more for the public's information, because they do such a great job for us. How much of this is being taken care of by the Lake Area Zoological Society?
The city is contributing $300,000, so then the $450,000 is coming from the Lake Area Zoological Society and a lot of donations from the public.
That's the great thing about it, you know, people, that society has did a great job for the zoo over the years, and the public has stepped up to the plate. You know, that's a great thing about Watertown, it's a great community, so thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Danforth.
Thank you. Now, we're issuing the contract. If I'm looking at the bid tabulation, Gray Construction's bid is higher than what's noted in our agenda packet. Is there a reason for that? Because we're going to bid, no matter where the funding's coming from, we're issuing the contract.
Engineer Peterson?
Yes, so that's part of the scope adjustment. The bid came in at, I can't remember the number, 800 some thousand, and they adjusted some of the scope, almost like a change order, and got the contract price down to $750,000.
Councilman Danforth?
Okay, I'll go with that.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Finance Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller?
Bueller, aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 11B, a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown, South Dakota, for a portion of property to be known as the replat of lots 2, 3, and 4 Mansell, second addition from R1 Single Residential District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District. We go to our community development manager, Brandy Hanton.
Okay.
There you are.
Thank you, Mayor. So as stated, this is the second reading of a rezone request for a property that is along South Lake Drive, just southeast of Sandy Shore Park. And let's get this pulled up here. So this is known as the Mansell Edition. The developers are Campsco, which Russell Warner is the acting agent and property owner partner with this application. So they're requesting that the property be rezoned from R1 Single Family Residential, which is what it was annexed and zoned as in 2018, and now are proposing the R3 Multi-Family Residential District. The area of this rezone encompasses 2.55 acres, which the replat will actually, currently there's three lots, and the replat that will go, that would be subsequent to this rezone, will consolidate it down to two lots. So the area that is shown here in this hatched blue, that is the lot that we are looking at, the rezone for the R1 to the R3. Other points, I guess as far as a little history, I did note this at the first reading as well, but as I stated, the annexation and zoning was done in 2018, and then a rezone to go, to actually rezone the entire area other than this western lot from the R1 to CL was done in 2023, and at that time, the Planning Commission did recommend the CL District being petitioned, and then the council ended up denying that request. And then later in 2023, they came back with a PUD, which is a planned unit development, and that was denied by the Planning Commission and then also denied by the city council. And that development was proposing 30 apartment units and 15 sportsman condos. And the large concerns with what was being proposed is there are jurisdictional wetlands, which a wetland delineation was done at the end of 2024, which showed the areas that are within that jurisdictional wetland, and that information was not provided at the time that this, that these rezones were being proposed. So not knowing what the buildable area was and then the density concerns were the large reasons for denial at that time. So with this proposal of the 2.55 acres, it does not include the large area where the wetlands exist. If you can see that on the screen where I'm circling, the green area are the jurisdictional wetlands. So you typically, you are not allowed to develop in a wetland unless you do get the proper permits. That usually involves credits being purchased from the Corps. But the thing about where these are located for this area where this rezone is being proposed, those would be largely within the setbacks that are required, so most likely building would not take place in them. The developers on their application have stated that they would like to construct two structures that would have four units each, and so they would be fourplexes, two fourplexes. Their intent is to have them be sold individually, so a subsequent condo plat would need to come forward. As we discussed at the first reading, and I actually misspoke when I said 65 units for one bedrooms, they could actually do 60 units for one bedrooms and then 46 units for two-bedroom units. The other thing that was discussed, and so, and that is actually taken by the total square footage, and then you can only have 80% lot coverage in the R3 District. So taking that amount, which came to about 90,000 square feet, is where those figures come from, for the type of units that you could have in an R3 District. You obviously can have more bedrooms, too, and then that just in turn lowers the amount of total units you can have. So with that, oh, I almost forgot it again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval to council unanimously at their meeting. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I would like to do proponents first.
Russell Warner, one of the partners.
Is the green light on?
It is.
Okay.
Russell Warner, one of the partners in Campsco.
Aaron Hanson, partner in Campsco, 1082 South Lake Drive.
All right. So about 15 years ago, I moved to Watertown and decided to call this place my home, and since then, I've started various businesses and developed various projects in the state. Some of the businesses you might know, East River Homes, East River Contracting, Tropical Smoothie. We now, I'd say, employ around 150 people in Watertown. And to go back to one of Lynn's first questions two weeks ago, you asked what my expectations on this lot was, and I've been doing some thinking. And so when I first moved here, one of the was, and I've been doing some thinking. And, so, when I first moved here, one of the things that makes this town great is the lake, and it's a bigger, bigger part of the reason that I'm here, and I probably share that with a lot of the residents that live here now. And one thing I've noticed in the past 15 years, there isn't much access to the lake, or at least affordable access, for that matter. So, when I came into this property, that was one of my expectations, or one of the hopes that I had. And a few of the other things, and I hear it, is the wetland and tearing up the wetlands. That is why we proceeded with a wetland determination, and Brandy elaborated on that pretty well. They determined a line, and we'll call, south of the line is wetlands, north of the line is uplands. None of the land that we will be developing is in the wetlands. And regardless if it's an R1 or an R3, that land would need to be regraded and changed. The other note is, across the street is already zoned as an R3, so at any point in time, those houses could be purchased, tore down, and something else could be built there purposely, for an R3, for the right purpose. So, that's basically all I have to say.
Mr. Hanson, anything to add?
No, I think Russell pretty well covered it. I think for us, the main reason to proceed with an R3 is so we can maximize the value of our land versus other options that might be available to us. That's important, that we can do that, both, you know, from a financial perspective. It, to us, makes sense, since we have adjacent R3, past City Council brought that in, you know, it was a pretty good meeting that they had at the time when Camp Development did that. I've watched that video, and there's a lot of thought put into that, when that was sold and brought in. You know, Sunnyside was across the street and had quite a few, quite a bit of traffic at the time, and I think even with what we're planning, it will be significantly less than what it was back in the day that the Sunnyside existed there. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just, Councilman Beeler, could you please mute your phone when you're not speaking? Okay, I think you got that. Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other proponent testimony? Any other proponents? Okay. Please just identify yourself for everyone.
Sorry.
There we go.
I'm Carrie Ness, I live directly across the street from this property. We've lived there for a short period of time. I guess, kind of, everything they said is all I was going to say. I do not have a, my family does not have a problem with the property being developed. When we moved in, we're under the understanding that something would be there. And it just, kind of, to me, it makes sense, there's R3 across the street, I live on a lot that's R3, even though I live in a single-family home. So, like at Planning Commission, they said, I think it was Todd, that said, if a tornado took out my house, I could build an apartment building there if it fit the situation. So, and I go back to, some of you were here during the project that was built behind my last home that I just moved out of, a room full of people showed up to disagree with that situation, that was butted up against R1, they wanted to make that R3, and that was approved. This just seems to make more sense to me, because we are R3 across of the street, there already is twin homes and things across the street, and they've done it around the lake, they've done it by the golf course, they've built the shops, and built the different units. So, I guess, the other thing that I think would be nice is, we looked and looked and looked for a place on the lake for years, and, 20 years, and finally found a place that worked for us at the time in our lives. But there's a lot of people that can't afford to live on the lake, that might benefit from a situation where there's a more affordable option possibly, but still having some access to, or a very close access to the lake, with Sandy Shore's being right there. So, it just makes sense to me, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further proponent testimony? Any other proponents? I'll go into opponent testimony, I just want to acknowledge that we have quite a few people here. Just raise your hand if you're in opposition, I'll still give you a chance to testify. Okay. I just ask, I'll give everyone a chance to speak, who wants to speak, I just ask that you keep your testimony unique, and not repeat what someone else has said. So, I will invite opponent testimony. Any opponents? Mr. DeVill, I see, welcome back.
Again.
Yep. But just please do identify yourself and who you represent.
My name is Ron DeVill, I live at 1062 South Lake Drive, across from this, but I'm across from the wetland. But my, one of my concerns is, some of these people don't understand what amount of snow we get out there, and the road we have out there, and traffic in the summertime when people want to use that out there. So, a lot of these people are new in the area, because I, that was bear at one time. But I have some pictures here of snow that people don't understand how bad it can get. Now, I'm over, probably in this area here, but it, there's, if you look down the road, this is a pile right in, right in, over there where Kurt's house was at, somewhere in there. And there was times where the county had to get the snow blower from this, from the airport, to clean that out. You couldn't get it cleaned out with a blade. Where are they gonna blow that snow now? I mean, if they start filling all that in, now, you said the wetland now, if they get the right permits and everything else, they could probably go and develop that someday. So, where are they gonna move the snow? That's a few people that I know is, is their concern, is my concern. Another thing is, too, we're finding, as far as the law enforcement, we're actually, I actually saw a couple of police officers over there now, but they're more up on the top side. Usually, we get police come through about 3:00 in the afternoon, there's nothing going on, and that's one of our big concerns. We got a lot of hot rodders, that's a racetrack, that's a racetrack coming down there. So, now you're gonna go and put all these people on this one side, they're gonna want to, they're going to want to go swim in the lake. You can get a $40, $40 permit and go over to Sandy Shore and all that. They gotta cross that road. There's gonna be traffic, you know, you're gonna have your walkway and all that, bike trail, sooner or later, they'll complete it on their side. But there's, there's just gonna be some problems, and you start piling in more people, hell, that'll turn into a damn village right there, and it's not gonna, it's just gonna be some trouble. Here's some pictures of the snow. That's that. This is down the road, down there. We've had, we've had snow blocked over there by the Sandy Shore, right along there. I even told the county one time, just leave it alone, because we get all this traffic from west side of the lake, comes down through that South Lake Drive area and all that, they could just as well use the highway and all that. So, I, as a good citizen, I told them, leave it blocked, and they did. So, and they did it a couple of times. But this is the snow we get, and you get up around the bend over there by Lauren's driveway, if they put that walking trail in on that south side, they don't have no place to put snow then, because they keep that, they're gonna keep that open during the, during the winter season, they keep that one part open.
Mr. DeVill, I mean, we get the snow, I mean, and I just don't know how many other people need to testify. You've made your point on the snow, I don't want to cut you off, but I just want to keep it going if we have a lot more people to testify.
See, I'm an old bartender, I just yak. I made my point, I guess, yeah.
And I'd like to invite everyone who wants to testify to please do, but I will limit it to just, let's say, three minutes each, so be succinct. Is there anyone else who would like to testify against this? Please just identify who you are and who you represent.
Mayor and council, I'm Greg Blow, I live at 446 South Lake Drive. I'm the chairman of the Lake Campesca Water Project District, which is an elected board, taxpayer-funded. We've been here many times, and so, I'll just say that water quality is the reason that we exist. When, when I started thinking about this project, and I just had in my head, oh, we've been doing this for a year, maybe it's only six months, and Brandy brought us up to date, I mean, going back to 2003, and actually before that. And the previous owner had a vision, and didn't work, for whatever reason. But I, and being a lawyer, I sort of had in the back of my head, the meeting, the bankruptcy meeting, when the bankruptcy attorney is trying to sell, or get somebody to buy this, and, you know, the, a lot of the work has been done, and there's a template out there, and it's R1, and it's R3, and is it PUD? I don't know. But I'm sure that that was in all of that conversation, because you want to get as much as you can for that, that situation. So, now, you know, it started out, the camel's nose was under the tent, and then he had to back off because things didn't work. But now, we've got a new camel, got the old tent, but we've got a new camel. And I worry that, and I anticipate, that we're gonna do the same thing, that there's gonna be an escalation in what's wanted, what's expected. There's already an escalation, if you ask me, in the number of units, and the number of people that are gonna be out there. It really is significant, I think. So, you know, what's changed from the old camel and the old tent to the new camel? I didn't hear a lot tonight, except density. In my mind, with density comes encroachment, and I, and not on purpose, necessarily, but you got kids, you got dogs, all sorts of things that are attracted to that water. And that water is what we're trying to protect. It runs into the lake, it's where fish spawn. We really need to protect that watershed. You know, what's changed? Well, we got a big mountain of dirt out there. Now, that's gotta go someplace. I don't think that's for people to take their folding chair and sit up there and look over the rooftops at the lake. That's gonna be spread out, that's gonna change the way the water runs off. And I haven't really heard much about that, and it concerns me as to where the water goes. I think that our second camel has the same problem that the first camel had, and that is, there's only so much land there, how can we maximize our profit? And, in my mind, and I'm not a developer, but the only way you do it is to raise the density so that you can sell more units. But there are a lot of people here that have more insight than I do, I appreciate your time and consideration. This is, this is important to the lake, and there are fewer and fewer and fewer places on the lake that even can be protected, and that are important to our lake, and we need to protect it as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blow. I've been hearing some beeping, if you have your phone, just check, make sure that it's on silent mode. Is there anyone else who would like to testify against this?
Thank you for hearing me. I'm Dan Gabriel, I'm at 1018 South Lake Drive, which is across the road from there and up by Lauren, across from Lauren. I'm asking you to vote against this proposal from R1 to R3. Voting against it does not mean you're against development. The land can be developed, but under the existing R1 zoning. It was zoned that way when it was purchased. The developers are free to proceed with single-family homes as long as they follow the rules. I don't think they need any additional permission for that. The land was purchased knowing it was R1. If it was their business plan to convert it to R3 when they, when they bought it, they took a risk. This was an effort to maximize their profitability. That's not wrong. Developers are entitled to pursue profit, but that pursuit should not come at the expense of the neighborhood's safety, infrastructure capacity, environmental health, or long-term well-being of the area. As a businessman in Watertown, I understand risk. I've made investments, some of them worked out, some of them did not. I've never expected the rules to change after the fact to protect my investment or increase my profits. Zoning at R3 would be undefined. I mean, there'd be a max. They can propose whatever they want, but they can develop to the max. We had a development a while back, the point, we were really excited about that. Four condo buildings, hotel, restaurant, pools, marina, even zip lines. Everybody liked the video that was shared, the project as it stands today, single condo building with unsold units, most of the units are Airbnbs, not homes. The wooded area is gone, in its place, a dirt pile, proposed campground, talk of tiny homes. There's a big difference between what was proposed and what's real. R3 zoning would dramatically increase the population density, as was stated before, and we're not equipped to handle it. South Lake Drive is narrow, lacks shoulders. We already have big struggles with speeding and traffic. already have big struggles with speeding and traffic. As Randy stated in a meeting before, that's been going on forever. Well, it's a problem. There's no sense in making it worse. Sandy Shore's campground is a couple hundred yards away. They increase the population and traffic on South Lake Drive during the non-winter months. It's dangerous. My own mailbox has been hit and replaced three times. I've, I've been in that house for five years. There's no safe place for parking, walking, or biking, yet this is the area where the city plans on finishing the bike path. The lots on that stretch are often less than 60 feet deep, and Toby's Slough is on the other side. There's no room to widen the road. Trucks have already been dumping fill on the land. Is anyone tracking how much runoff may be affecting Toby's Slough? I mean, they've been dumping it there since they started the Point project. When the area floods again, and it will, how will the displaced water impact nearby properties? And finally, development should enhance neighborhoods, not disrupt, devalue, or create ongoing safety concerns. Lake properties are among the highest taxed and valued in the city. Zoning that allows apartments or dense development across single-family homes and duplexes doesn't respect or preserve those values. Even if it's zoned R3 across the street, I would say that was probably a mistake. They didn't follow the plan to do R3. It's all single-family homes and duplexes. And development for the sake of development isn't necessarily good development. This isn't anti-growth. This is about responsible development. Growth that makes sense, supports infrastructure, fits the neighborhood, and improves the community. I'd ask you to please vote no.
Thank you. Is there any other opponent testimony? Any further opponents?
Mark Roby, 346 North Lake Drive. I'm also a longtime member of the Lake Campesca Water Project District Board. This is deja vu all over again for me. A little smaller project, but increases the density, and all the other things Dan said quite eloquently. From my standpoint and from the board's perspective, the point we made the last time we were here is the same one. Why are we developing the most precious parts of the lake ecosystem when there's plenty of other ground around the lake, and Toby's Slough is a precious part of this lake, and it's a way to protect the lake and the very high property taxes of which the city is benefiting from? I know, because I just got my last assessment. So the point is, why are we concentrating on this area for a dense development? That's what bothers Lake Campesca Water Project District. We don't see it as a win-win. We see it as a win-lose for the lake and the Campesca Master Plan that the, the community developed. I also have a question with the fill, but I don't know how we've been getting away with now, what, six years, five years of fill on that lot without a formal designation or re-annexation. I understand that's allowed. I think you ought to change that. Fill ought to follow the zoning of what it is, and right now, I haven't heard anybody talk about a single-family house in that lot. It's dense apartment buildings, so we're against it. I hope you do vote no. Thank you.
Any further opponents? Any further opponents? A closed public test, public hearing. I'll open it up for Council Action. Can I get a motion to approve the zoning map amendment? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. So open it up for comments and questions. I'm going to go to Councilman Beeler first, and we're going to see how this goes. And just for everyone to know, Bruce is out fishing. He doesn't have internet access. That's why he's not on Teams, but he wanted to be here for the meeting, so he's on my phone. So, well, I think he's fishing. I don't know. Councilman Beeler, you don't have to tell us what you caught, but if you would like to say something, now's your time to do so.
Well, we caught a tremendous amount of large fish, and I think that's important to know. Anyway, no, I just, you know, we've been over this and over this, and I think Mr. Gabriel put it quite well, and I don't, I don't think, in my opinion at all, this would be responsible development. So my vote will be no on the R3 request.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Beeler. Any further comments, questions? Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we've got a lot of people here. We've got those that are here, Mr. Warner and Mr. Hanson with his request. I appreciate the fact that they're here. I respect their right to be here, as anybody else that has come before this body or the planning commission before for anything, but especially this, this piece of property. I want to make sure that, our job is to try to do what's right. There's no way this is person-owned in any way, shape, or form, but I do want to make, because it was stated, I want to do one correction with Ms. Ness, if I may, and that is, the request that was made, that you referred to was R3, but it ended up being a PUD, and that PUD is what sold that to the community around them. So that, that is a difference, and that's where we're at here. I, I have looked at the previous requests, and I really don't see, the concerns are the same, as far as I'm concerned, that the reasons why this, other than some of the commercial aspects of it, a lot of the, the reasons that have caused this to be rejected in the past, they hold true again, as far as I'm concerned. And so I won't be voting to approve this. I do go back to when this was first requested to be annexed and zoned into the city, and there was a lot of discussion at that time of how the land was going to be brought in, and ultimately, after a lot of discussion and consideration, it ended up being R1. I still believe that's probably the right, the right designation and the right use for this land. Brandy, I can ask a point of clarification, if I may? You had, you had stated that there could be 61 units, one-bedroom units?
Sixty. Sixty-one bedrooms, yes.
Sixty-one bedroom, and, or, is it, or 46 two-bedroom?
Yep.
What, one or the other? Is there some mix of the two, some?
Yeah, so it's just, so for a one-bedroom unit, that is 1,300 square feet per unit, and then for two bedrooms, it's 1,700 square feet. So they could do a mix of anything.
So it'd be between 46 and 60.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
60 would be like worse, well, I mean, potentially.
Worst case, best case, whatever it is. Anyway, it's going to be somewhere between 46, could be, and 60. And the challenge we have isn't what is being presented to us. The challenge is what it could be. So that is how I have to look at it. In the years that I've been on the council, years that I was on the planning commission, there are a few times where I've looked back and I went, darn, I wish I wouldn't have done that. And it's usually because we looked at the picture, at the vision, and went with it, and it don't work that way. The other thing I think that is important is, you know, I did hear that really the primary reason, or a, a primary reason, is to maximize their financial profit on, on this land. I understand that. I don't, I don't fault anybody for trying to do that. That cannot be a consideration on our part, on anybody's application to this, to determine their financial outcome. Our job is to look and see purely from the order's standpoint, whether it fits or not, if it's right. So that's my, my, excuse me, my say on this. I will be voting no on this.
Councilman Beeler, I'm just going to communicate with you. His phone is almost dying. Councilman Beeler, would you like to turn off your phone, and I will call you at the time of the vote?
Yes, read, I can do that.
Okay, so I'm going to hang up on Councilman Beeler now. I will call him back when it's time for the vote, just so that people know what, what I'm doing here. So, Councilman Beeler, I will call you back when we're ready to vote.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any further comments from the council? Councilman Jerns?
There was a question.
The green light on. Oh, we hear that a few times a night. There was a question I asked early and two weeks ago in the, in the first reading that Councilman Danforth alluded to, and Brandy answered at that time, and that really, really made it a quick, early, easy decision for me. The location for that type of housing, it's really not a good location for affordable housing. We've heard that. It's really, Brandy, question when it comes to location, that both of them brought up, both of the testimonies that we heard from the proponents, and Russell used my name, so I guess I get to ask the question. They both talked about access to the lake. From this side, is there any plans that they, that they would have access to the lake from, from this property?
No, they don't about the lake. They'd have to go to Sandy Shore.
Okay.
Unless they upgrade the culvert coming through Ron's. I'm just kidding on that.[1277.33][1277.33](laughter)
All right. So there was another piece of testimony, and it must have been, I didn't go back. The first time I heard of this, you know, shame on me, is when I, I saw the news about this coming back, but evidently, there was some testimony previously here from Ms. Ness, talking about if a tornado took out one of those one-family dwellings, which that's what she has. There's three one-family dwellings there right now in that R3, and there's two two-family dwellings. Fits, fits, according to my litmus test. But if a tornado took out one of those buildings, would they be able to build a multiplex or a multi-unit in a small lot like the size that we're seeing up there?
Yes, they would be, but again, the total amount of units would be limited based on their total square footage.
So not an apartment building with 60 or between 40 and 60 units?
No.
Okay. Another thing that we've heard about is, and we might hear about in, in, in some testimony coming up, is a 7-0 vote by the planning commission. So I called a couple planning commissioners, because I always hesitate to override the work that they've done and the vetting they've done, and really, the comment was, no one showed up. Well, I have to admit, I didn't show up. Number one, I wasn't here. I could have gotten in on Teams, but number two, I didn't, again, I had my head under the, you know, buried in the sand. I didn't see it was even coming up, and until these things get serious, we all just don't think it's going to happen, and we don't really show up. Well, when it gets to this point, is I think when it becomes urgent and we all want to show up. So, you know, the answer of, well, no one showed up as an opponent for it, yeah, I get it, but, you know, there was some momentum with the 7-0 vote, and according to this person, she said, if we hear more testimony, there's nothing wrong with reversing it. So that is a lot of what I wanted to just add on for all the testimony that's been up. One thing that was alluded to also a little bit in the testimony here earlier was the flooding, and we talked about the flooding as, you know, displacing land. Yeah, that's one thing, but I would add on to the flooding. For those of us that got to see the flooding of 97, and I wasn't around Ron in the previous floods, not quite that old, but in the 32 years that I have lived in this community, we've seen that thing shut down at least twice over the years with, with roadblocks, and for, for a reason, because it's a narrow road, and you shouldn't be running through there and putting waves into other people's homes. The other thing that I visualize when I see flooding, and it's going to happen again because we haven't done anything to change what's going to flood Lake Campesca from now, and in fact, based on testimony from, from the Corps, they're going to use it as a bladder, so it could happen even more. That this property, where they've brought in and they've graded the dirt that they've been talking about, that's going to be its own little island, because everything around it, including the road, will have one to two to three to who knows how many feet of water. So are we ready for that? Have we planned for that? Do we, do we really want to see this kind of density in that area? So I would, I, along with the other three, two or three testimonies on the council, will be voting no, and I appreciate the testimony from both sides tonight.
Councilman, actually, would it be all right, Councilman Tupper, if I, I just have a question about the fill. Several people had asked about the fill. What is the status of that? Did they need a permit? Is it there legally? What's going on with that?
Yes, so they have received permits to place that fill, and the other thing with it being in the floodplain, regardless if they would develop it as single-family homes or a fourplex, they would have to bring in fill because they're in the floodplain, and those regulations apply, obviously, because we're part of the National Flood Insurance Program, and you have to build up. So all of the houses that are adjacent to the lake, they're, if they are pre-firm, which is like pre, before we joined the flood insurance program, then they are not, they, they are not in compliance, but are obviously in a floodplain. So in anything now that's built has to comply, so that's why the fill is required regardless of what's being built. We do not have anything about compensatory storage, which if that's, you know, as a community, that's something we could look into, but they actually are required to bring in fill or raise the, the structure, so it's protected against the flood.
Are there precautions being taken so that that fill does not currently drain into the slough?
Yes, yep. With the sensitivity of the wetland being there too, and that's actually, Justin manages those, those permits, but they do have BMPs required, and I believe with this one, because they have a 20-feet, a 20-foot vegetative buffer that, and silt fence, that they are in compliance.
All right, thank you. Councilman Tupper?
Well, first off, I'm going to make a, all due respect, Councilman Jerns, I'm going to make a correction to what you stated, because the Army Corps of Engineers has pulled back the fact that they're going to use Lake Campesca as a bladder. They pulled that off the, the plans. If, if somebody could correct me, Justin, is that true statement? Our last meeting with the Corps, they said they would not use...
Actually, could I jump in quick, Justin?
Yeah, go ahead.
And just on the clear, like, today, Lake Campesca is the bladder. Like, so what the Corps was proposing is that they would have it be at a lower level, so that it had more capacity when the flood came. So the, the fact that the, and I, I'll let Justin speak now to where the Corps is going with it, but as far as like what they've presented for alternatives, I think that still stands as an alternative, but they are looking at the benefit cost analysis, and, and so we'll get an update from them at some point.
Yeah, I don't... The last time I remember talking to Corps, they were not going to use that weir to lower the lake level, and that's where that would work into a bladder. Yes, it's a natural bladder, but they weren't going to lower the lake level to create that bladder on runoff. Correct? Their last plan?
The, it's still an alternative, and then there's a locally preferred plan, which is kind of the route that they're, they're hoping to, to move forward with, and that's the...
Channel widening.
Yep.
Channelizing, yeah.
And they're doing the, the cost benefit analysis for those right now.
Until they get it all said and done, I guess maybe both me and Councilman Jerns are right or wrong, however you want to look at it, because they haven't really come up with the exact plan, but the original plan was to lower the lake level every fall to a certain part, point, and then with a lot of opposition, they are looking at other... And then with a lot of opposition, they are looking at other alternatives. So as far as snow storage, we deal with that throughout town. I got some people that live up on just south of 14th Avenue. And when the city built the wellness center and took all those trees out of there where they never had snow in their yards before, come winter months, if we have a tough winter, I mean, I've seen the city have to go up there with the snow blower and clean it out, one from the airport. That's going to happen whenever we go anyplace. Or could happen. That's just part of development. There wasn't a single person, I went back and looked at the videos from 2018 when this was annexed into the City of Watertown. There wasn't a single person that opposed it. There wasn't nobody here. You've got annexed unanimously into the City of Watertown. I didn't see any opposition there because it was silhouette land then. These gentlemen have did a great job of spending a lot of money to determine the wetland and to make sure that they're not developing, or not, good developers, put it that way. One thing I've said, and a lot of people have heard me say this many, many times, and no disrespect for the people that live at the lake. But a lot of it is all about, I've heard the comment from just about everybody that testified, we pay high taxes. We got the most highest taxes in the city. And we don't want to see that across the street. The only way you don't, the only way you get a guarantee you not see that across the street is you buy it. And I don't think I've seen anybody walk up and offer these gentlemen any money for that property. I'm sure they'd sell it in a heartbeat. That's the only way we're guaranteed our view. If we like the view out our back window, we better buy it because that's the only way we're guaranteed that. I'm pro-development and I think this would be an outstanding development for that piece of property. Because if we don't pass it tonight, what's going to happen is they're going to bring it back as a PUD and more likely, it's going to get passed anyhow. And I understand the residents' concern with that and Councilman Danforth. And I think Councilman Jerns would, I mean, that's probably the way they want to see it come back as a PUD. Don't be afraid to step in and correct me if I'm wrong. And I can see that. But all we're going to do is take a bunch more time and a lot of the developer's money. As far as the road, the lake road's been there forever. Yeah, it's narrow. Development's development. We got a lot of roads, we got developments that got there on half a street. You know, we just got a, you know, how much are we going to drag these people through the weeds? Because eventually, it's going to get developed. If they bring it back as a PUD, that way you're sure to what it is. I don't think there's anybody who's going to put 61-bedroom apartments or 46 two-bedroom apartments in there. To me, that just wouldn't make any sense. So I'm going to be supporting this as is with a R3. And I think that's just the right thing to do. All due respect for everybody who lives around the lake. When you talk about the taxes, we all pay too much taxes. That's just part of life nowadays. But the taxes at the lake are probably higher because the values at the lake are higher than in the community. So that's all I got.
Councilman Peters? Councilman Shuddy, I just want to make sure if you have anything that you want to say? Yep, Councilman Shuddy?
Yes, I sure do. Thank you. And thank you for all who are involved in this evening and in the last previous weeks. A couple of questions that, one was already answered, I had, but I believe it's been answered by Ms. Hampton. As far as the fill levels for that property, if it's going to be an R1, it's already going to get filled up to the same, I would believe, the same level as if it's going to be an R3. So when we were concerned about environment, as far as, you know, the fills and wetland, I believe we've already kind of got that determined, that that's not going to be a determining factor. I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's not a determining factor in this particular project as far as fill level. Because it will be filled if someone develops it as R1. They can do it today, even if this passes or doesn't pass. Let's just say that can still be done as an R1. So there's that concern. As far as the, you know, snow removal too, I lived on South Lake Drive and I was out there in 96. And yeah, as far as, there was no houses across the street from me per se. But now there is quite a bit on South Lake Drive by prairie winds. And it's just those adjustments you make with the snow removal, depending on the winter and depending on what kind of element happens as things progress. So again, that, I'm saying, expressing these, these aren't really for me personally deciding factors in this particular decision this evening. Now, when it comes to the vision, so really what we're talking about is the vision for lake property is, even though we're talking about this one property, it's, this is going to be a continuum. We've already done a CL discussion, you know, and got some ordinances going forward with that. But, you know, this is the vision for lake property. As far as R3, you know, across the street from the lake, is R3 a proper, you know, type of zoning for that? I appreciate everybody getting involved. But when we go to the, and that's a bit, I don't mean but by erasing that because that's a big deal. That's just how I'm making my decision even this evening is I'm coming in here with an open mind. Even going into this evening, I am listening to everybody that even shared tonight. I didn't come in here with, oh, this is where I'm going to go with this. I want to hear and get every detail that I can hear, that I can take in and make a wise decision. So I've already, I discussed with, not only listened this evening to some folks who've shared on both sides, I've also visited with, you know, someone from the planning commission. I visited with a developer. And for example, on the planning commission, yeah, there was not much opponents on this at the planning commission. And so, you know, as they were working through this, I don't think that was their only decision though, based off that one thing. They also were looking at, you know, the lake property across the street on the lakeside. And that got my attention here two weeks ago was like, well, it's already an R3 across the street, which, boy, you develop an R1, you put a house, let's just say, and, you know, just a just a regular R1 type of house structure there across the street in this spot. And then all of a sudden, I don't know, some developer wants to tear down those houses. They got a lot of money to spend and they want to put up apartment, you know. Now you've got this big apartment unit that you can't see the lake from these R1s. So then that's an issue, you know, let's just say what ifs, right? So was that even the right decision to make that an R3 way back when? That's a, that's another, you know, one to be discussed that can go on, I'm sure. But as far as, as far as the planning commission and their involvement, as Councilman Jerns had mentioned, we do have to also got to, you know, incorporate their wisdom and their direction. And that's how we work together as a team, the planning commission, the city council, the developers, the people involved. So again, with them being 7-0, and then maybe that vote would have changed depending on some parameters. Maybe, maybe there's a way in the future, we can do this where we get a little more involvement at the planning commission stage with all the people involved, all the neighborhoods, the council and the planning commission. Maybe that'll be a better, so we don't run into this we're at tonight. And so, you know, again, as I'm working through this process personally, listening to all these, all these points that are being made, I've always been challenged by, in the vision part of it, having an R3 apartment units on that, like a section like that right across the street. That's a challenge for me. Now again, that's what we're voting on. We're not voting on, you know, this development. If we're voting on a, this proposed development, it's a, it's probably maybe a yes for most of the councilmen, but that's not what we're voting on. And I feel bad for the developer on that point, just because that's, you know, that's what we're, you know, we're kind of making this. As I believe Mr. Gabriel had said, that those are the things we got to kind of factor in when we buy a property. So so my thoughts, I guess, on this is we've got the planning commission, we've got what they say, we've got, you know, the vision. We haven't really dialed in the vision for lake property as far as, you know, where do we want to put apartment units? I'm not against even putting apartment units. You know, I guess some people would say, oh, I'm for it just as long as it's not across from my house, right? So then there's that, right? So we can't, we've got to have a broader discussion and not just listen to everybody who doesn't want it across from their house. So that's why even with this, all the evidence, things that people are bringing forth, some things pertain to this conversation, but some things really don't pertain. So it boils down to the hardcore, do we want an R3 across the lake on that particular area or not? And, and it's, you know, there is R3 on the lakeside. So for me, I guess personally, right now, I, it's hard for me to see justifying going with an R3 right now across the street. As much as I'm for this development, I absolutely am for this. I like, I like this kind of a development. It's just, again, that's my conscience, I'm not voting on this development. I'm voting on, do I feel that R3 is the right fit for across the street? As far as those who say, you know, the fill levels and we can't put that kind of property there because of fill environmental, that's going to be filled with R1. So that's, that ship has sailed already too. So that's not even a defense. It's just really boils down to, are we, do we want to see R3 in that particular location? And I personally, on that point, I am not completely sold on that point. There's probably about five other points where I would be for this. However, on that point right there, I am not sold for that. And so I have to say no for that reason. So that's just where I'm at this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Shuddy. Councilman Peters?
Couple of questions. Brandy, I'll start with you. Can you, do you have the, I think you do, the R3, what they can build there? And can we just look at that compared to R2?
Yes. Oh, and actually, I had an R4. So here, for the ordinance, as far as the permitted uses for the R3 multifamily residential, you can have all the permitted uses in the R1 and the R2 districts, which is single-family or duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. And then multifamily dwellings, public utilities and services required by the resident population and recreational uses. And then there's the list of conditional uses that would require them to go back to the Board of Adjustment, which would be any conditional use in the R1 and R2, storage units, clubs, lodges and community centers, clinics and hospitals, licensed residential treatments, or group homes, or specific use office buildings. And then in the R2, that only allows, which obviously they're not, they have not applied or petitioned to be R2. But for what they are proposing, R2 would fit what the two fourplexes. Because the permitted use in the R2 is all permitted uses in the R1, which is single-family homes, duplex, triplex and fourplex.
Thank you. Can I ask an applicant?
Yep.
A question. One of you gentlemen, would you mind coming up, please? While you're making your way up, for the record, I didn't have anybody reach out to me on this. Nobody called me and said good, bad, otherwise. So I'm, this is all good testimony and I didn't hear anything outside of the applicant reached out and asked me if I had any concerns. And so the question that I posed back to the applicant was why not R2? And I never got a response. So if you'd be willing to answer that, that'd be great.
I guess the biggest reason, it'd probably be for the same reason everyone's opposing it. There's still a certain amount of units that are acceptable in an R2. We're not proposing a particular development. It's just as own as R2. And Brandy could probably speak on the maximum density in an R2.
That'd be helpful if you would, Brandy.
Yep. And so in the R2, if they were doing fourplexes, they could do eight lots, which would be 32 units. If they were doing duplexes, they could do 12 lots, which would be 24 units. And if they were doing single-family homes, they could do 18 lots, which would be 18 units.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to jump around here a little bit. I don't know who's best to answer this, but Brandy or Justin. So the question I would have is, okay, now let's just, let's just role play for a second here. What if we deny R3 and they come back with R2? What does that do to help any flood mitigation situations, concerns, if any?
Nothing. The zoning doesn't necessarily matter.
Okay, so I'm going to take that a step further. What if we deny R3 and R2? It's currently zoned R1 and they develop it. What does that do to the flood concerns, if any?
It doesn't.
So I guess where I'm getting at with this is I think we don't have a decision whether R3, R2, R1 is on the table. I think we have a decision is, should this be developed at all? And as Dan said in his testimony, he had a good point. The pie is kind of well baked if it's zoned R1 the way it is. I mean, they're going to be able to develop this no matter what. And from what I'm understanding is flooding is always going to be a concern no matter what's built. If it's single-family, if it's R2, if it's R3. So I'm struggling with this a little bit. I'm not going to lie to you. Personally, you know, some of the concerns I got thrown out in Mr. Gabriel, your testimony was great. Thank you for that. But some of the other concerns is snowdrifts and hot routers. And no development would happen if it was for snowdrift or speeding. And I'm just going to make an example. We live on the north side of town and our neighbor is a cornfield and it snows terrible. So should that property not be developed because it's going to make it worse? Well, it's for sale right now. Somebody's selling it to develop. So at some point, we have to live with some of these concerns and risk and work around them. Flooding is, excuse me, snowing is always going to be an issue. Speeding on my road on, by Jefferson Circle, terrible, all the time. There was just an apartment complex built and the speeding was just as bad before as it is after it was built. So I have to take some of that aside because you're going to hear that no matter what. And if you, if you sit on this side of the table long enough, you're going to hear traffic, snow, density. And so I'm trying to take that aside and, you know, no offense to the lake homeowners, but try to figure out who, who is, who's actually against this? Is it truly not in my backyard and there's nothing wrong with that? I wasn't too hot on the idea of the apartment being built across my house, but we needed it. We welcomed it and we embraced it. And so I'm trying to figure out how there's happy medium here. And, and I thought maybe when I originally started talking, happy medium might be R2. But I don't know if it is. Because the concerns that I've heard so far are already going to be realized if R1 is developed. Flooding, snowdrifting, all the concerns that have been raised are already going to happen. So now we, now it's density. And is density going to be the driver of this development? Is it going to be, is it too much? And I guess that's where I'm relying a little bit on the planning commission to help me from their perspective. It helped me understand what their thoughts are. And, and, you know, some might argue that four single-family homes there is too dense. I don't know. I mean, it's a little bit subjective. So I'll maybe, I'll maybe put a pin in that for now, but I don't know exactly where I'm at on this. But I think now that it's zoned R1 and adjacent properties are R2, I feel like the turkey is kind of cooked at this point. But I'll continue to take in some testimony from my counterparts. Thank you.
Councilman Jerns, did you have something? No. Councilman Tupper?
This is a question for Community Development Manager. That property is allowed to be zoned R3, correct, according to our ordinances?
Yes.
Along with a lot of other property around the lake, on the, not the lake proper so much, but across the street.
Yeah, and it all just is on transitional zoning. And obviously, this, that's why it comes before city council to approve, but yes.
And it's not spot zoning because we have R3 across the street. Regardless of what they use it for or not, it is R3. I'm going to agree with, with with Councilman Peters, no matter what we put there, all those, most of the questions that were asked are going to be there irregardless. You know, the narrow road, you know, I guess the only thing that would be a little bit different is maybe a little bit of density. And it's still not a big piece of property that's going to change the density dramatically. There'll probably be as many people on the bike trail extra every day is what there'll be created by this, or if this development goes through. Once we get the bike trail finished over there. You know, the big question is in front of us, would we allow it across the lake in another lot? Probably would. It all depends on how many people showed up to talk against it. We got to govern by what's in our rules and regulations. R3 is allowed in that, that area. There's nothing that says it can't be R3. Well, yeah, Mike's right. It's right here is what can say it can't be R3. But unless there's a logical reason to say it can't be zoned R3, I can't say that I can't vote for it. And I don't see a logical reason to turn it down, so.
Councilman Peters?
Could I ask Mr. Rolby or somebody from the Lake District to come up and speak real quick? I just have a really quick question, somebody. Sorry, Mark, I called you out.
I'll get even.
The question is, would you guys be supportive of any development on this, on this property?
Well, it's zoned R1, so you can build single-family houses there. Would we like that? No. Would we oppose it? No.
Thank you. That's what I needed.
And at this point too, there would not be And, and at this point too, there would not be any public hearing for subsequent, for development as an R1, unless the variance was needed from the Board of Adjustment or something. But otherwise, it would be permitted. Single family homes would be permitted on the lots that are there today.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Well, first of all, I want clarification on this, Brandy, so help me out procedurally. We, we went through the conditional uses. Any conditional use request goes purely back to the Board of Adjustments, correct?
Correct.
Doesn't come to the Plan Commission, doesn't come to the council?
Nope.
They're the judge and jury. So, so keep in mind that everything that's listed in there doesn't come over here to this side of the table. The second thing is, we keep gravitating to a, a, an R2. And Mr. Tupper, I, to say if this was some other place on the, on the lake, you know, would we allow it? Well, this is very situational. Is it the right place for R2? There's places where R3 would be fine. This becomes a density issue. It's not a water issue to me. That, that's a whole separate issue. That, somebody said that ship sailed a long time ago. It did. It's important to us, but that's not our consideration today, because it can be developed today, in, in whatever manner they want that fits the R1. So help me out, uh, Brandy, I got my notes here that I, I don't know what I wrote down. How many, I got a number of 32 fourplexes?
The, uh, 32, yep, 32 fourplexes.
32 individual fourplexes.
32 units. So they could do eight fourplexes.
Okay, so 32 means bedrooms.
Um, or just units. Because then when you go into R2, we don't go by bedrooms. Only the R3.
What's a unit?
Um, like, one of the units out of the fourplex. An address?
Okay. So I could have 32 fourplexes, not sure how many bedrooms, right?
You could have eight, so you could have eight lots where you could develop one primary structure, which would be one fourplex. So if you would do one fourplex on each of those eight lots, you could have 32 total units, but eight total buildings.
Okay. Or, same concept with the 24 twoplexes?
Yep.
Right?
12 structures.
Which equals 12 structures. Okay. Gosh, you'd think I'd know this by now, but I don't. So, so my issue purely is, is density. We can talk about snow, we can talk about speeders, uh, we can talk about the, the water. The water is a big issue, separate issue. This is about density. In a, in an area that we know in general is condensed, and it is a, guys, there's a reason why this is the last place on the whole lake that we're working on the bike trail, because it's the most challenging to us. So, um, it is fraught with problems on, on any larger scale development. And I want to go back to it. It's the same discussion we had way back when, when we said, do we want to bring it in and annex it? And if we do, what is the right thing for it? And it was R1. And it still is R1. Now, I will say, and I think, uh, Councilman Shuddy said it, um, is, we're not voting on their vision and their plan. We're voting on, on the, the, uh, zoning, and what all could go in there. And so I believe somebody had said it's possible that if it came back as a PUD, I think it was Mr. Tupper, that it, at least would, it would probably have a higher level of consideration than as it sits today because of the numbers that we talked about in R2 and R3. No matter what they say, and I'm not challenging them as far as their, their honesty or integrity, that's just the way it is. And for that reason, you know, we, we can get lost in the, in the white noise of all these other issues. It's density issue in that area. And it's not right for it. It's not the right place.
Thank you. Any further council comments, questions? And Councilman Tupper?
I don't know how to ask this, and that's, um, strange, I guess, but I wonder how many people would be here if we were talking about a PUD right now? Doesn't matter? You'd still be here opposing it?
I didn't say that. It doesn't matter.
Yeah. You know, so I, I think, think, think that's where it's going to head, is to a PUD. We're going to watch the developer waste a bunch of money, and re-bring it back as a PUD, and still do the same thing that he's planning on doing today. It, it's not very developer friendly. And I've heard that by many, many developers around Watertown. And Watertown isn't very developer friendly. This goes to show that. It's my only point.
Councilman Peters?
Brandy, I missed that I was coming out of the restroom. What, what, how many buildings can they have? Again, really quick, give me the 30-second Reader's Digest of how much density buildings and things like that, again.
Yep. So if they were doing, if this was zoned R2, and they were doing duplexes, they would do, um, 12 lots, or they could maximize the property by doing 12 lots, which would be 12, because you can have one primary structure per lot. So then, for the duplexes, then you'd have 24 units total, 12 structures. If you were doing a fourplex, you would do, you could maximize it with eight lots, which would have one structure per lot, which it's a fourplex, so then it'd be 32 units. And if it was single family, it'd be 18. 18 lots, 18 houses. So duplexes, you'd have eight buildings, sorry, duplexes, you'd have 12 buildings, fourplexes, you'd have eight, and single family, you'd have 18.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Jurens?
So we've had a couple of things thrown out there about wasting money. No one has asked anyone or forced anybody to start spending money on this project. So, uh, this can be fast-tracked. It's an R1 already. They could have been developing this for a year, two years. So wasting money by delays, but, you know, going back to, you know, the, the investment that, that Dan talked about in the beginning, not always do we make good investments. But the comment about wasting money, uh, is really, no one here has forced anybody to throw money into this project. And there's machinery out there today, uh, there's, 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 there's been tons of dirt hauled in there for five years. There's not one person that's held anybody to the coals to spend that money. So I, I, I can't use that as my decision-making factor. I also have heard this anti-development word before. And I would ask that if anybody wants to develop in Watertown, call me. I'd be the first one to help in a good, responsible place to develop. This is a fragile area. This is a, a, an interesting area, to say the least. And it's, it's about density, and it does not hurt to be questioned about density at our level. That's why we're here.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Councilman Peters?
Last comment I'll make here, um, just to maybe round my thoughts out, and thank you, Brandy, for providing that information, because one thing that's kind of lost on us here a little bit, or maybe me, is how dense it really is. And, and I'm thinking this through from a very agnostic standpoint. I'm looking at this at face value without any of the other concerns, and just the density side. And if you think about, what was again, I'm sorry, I was taking notes, but if they do duplexes, it's 12 structures, correct, to hit the 24?
Yep.
And the, the total acreage amount is how much?
Uh, 2.55 acres total. And then, um, what is required? Let me pull up the chart. So when we look at R2, then when you're doing a duplex, you need 9,000 square feet per lot. So that's where I took the 100 and, 111,000, basically, divided by 9,000.
Okay, got it. So just a little where I was a, a year ago when this was brought as a PUD, I actually did vote no on that, and the reason why was because of density. And I do believe that responsible development is important, and I am very pro-development. I absolutely love development. I think it's good for a lot of different reasons. Property taxes, sales tax, um, culture, all the things. I will say, the 12 structures on that is worrisome. To me, that is a lot of structures, and to say this differently, I think my house sits on like .3 acres, and there's one house. And most of my neighbors sit on that. And I realize that duplexes are different than single families, I understand this, but I'm imagining if there were 12, or two more structures on my property to get to what this ratio is, and it's dense, and I get that, and I understand that's the point of multi-development, or multifamily development. But this is dense, guys. And, um, I still don't know where I'm at on this. I'm, I'm 50/50 on it, but I will say that the, the reason that I have an issue with this comes down to density. And it comes down to, um, not really fully understanding from the applicant's standpoint of why not R2 before I got here. And then secondly, it comes down to, um, really just trying to understand what 12 structures looks like and does compared if it was stayed as a single family. So it's a tricky one. Yeah, I appreciate all the testimony. I, I'm still thinking this through, and I've gained a lot of good information, so thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to remind us on this side of the table, I want to remind everybody, we're not here with a request to go into R2. It's R3. No, you said R2. So the, the information that you asked of Brandy related to all the, the structures related to R2. They can put, Brandy, I don't know how that equates to actual buildings, but you said they could be 60 units, right? If they're one bedroom?
Yep.
Up to 46 units if they're two-bedroom. Now, we're talking about the R3, and it's important that we have the numbers, because what that does, Councilman Peters says, is exacerbates your concern significantly. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're not being asked to approve R2 or PUD. What's in front of us is the R3, and, and that, and again, I, I wish we could find a solution for this, this land. I think there, it's, it's a nice piece of land if it's developed properly. And I hope that we can somewhere along the line figure something out. I know everybody gets tired of this. We've been through this with some other areas. Everybody gets tired of it. They don't want it coming back. Let's try to find a solution that works for everybody, both the developer, and see what we can do also that works for the neighborhood, what's the right thing to do in regards to, for the community. So I hope that's where we can get eventually.
Councilman Jurens?
All right, I'm about done kicking the, kicking the horse. But I was reminded the other day, um, what else does, density does do to, and why the lake is sort of different, is that our sewer system out there is run by lift stations. And in the flooding, that becomes a big issue. The sewer system also was put in place in 1975. It was not designed to handle increasing, 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 uh, density. So in future things, and in this property, and in talking density, um, I was reminded of that by someone who knows the sewer system around the lake, and has dug many of them up. So, um, again, I go back to R3 being too much. I go back to this not being the right, the right decision for me to make right now. Thank you.
Councilman Tupper?
Councilman Jurens, do you have any proof that the lift stations would not handle another few people, or is that just hearsay?
I lived out there in 97. I lived out there in 2001.
Yep.
And the person who gave me this information, I guess we could ask an expert, but I think it's time to take a vote.
So we shouldn't?
I'm done arguing about it.
So we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't develop anything at the lake, because the sewer systems right now are full capacity? Is that your comment?
Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So just again, you know, I came into this evening, this meeting with an open mind. I, I really honestly was kind of like Councilman Peters. I've looked at it both ways. One moment I'm for a yes, one moment I'm at no. So tonight's, uh, discussion with everybody that brought some information, and some information, as we've discussed, is not as pertinent as others. So getting to the facts, getting to the density we're talking about, um, again, I just appreciate how we're working as a city and as a community. Hopefully, hopefully a developer will see us in properly doing this with smart development. We're trying to work together. It's not trying to be us against the developer. Sometimes that can kind of get, get pointed or get thought of, but that's not the case. This is working together with it, with citizens, with the council, with the developer, and I believe, I still believe there could be something done here. It's just a matter of getting there, and yes, it's going to take, it's taking a little longer, but the process, this is a good process. Even if it doesn't go away, a certain person wants, or two don't want it to go, um, I do appreciate the process and how, how I got to my decision this evening by, by listening and working together. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or comments? I'm going to call up Councilman Beeler. Uh, I will just say one thing. Still not exactly sure how I would like to vote on this one. I can see good reasons for both. One of the things that's weighing heavy in my mind is, I, this has been a process to do the commercial lake zoning, not that this is it, but we've been trying to come up with a solution for development at Lake Compeska for years now. And I thought that we were closer than what apparently we are. And I actually do hear from people, uh, in the state and in the community that Watertown is anti-development, and that we always say no if anyone shows up. That is real. I get that from people coming up to me quite often. So that weighs heavily upon my mind. Ask myself, what would I feel if I lived out there? Probably would also not be in favor of it, but the thing is, is I would also, I also have a policy that I would never buy a house where I don't have everything already zoned around me. So. All right, I'm going to call Councilman Beeler. Or Built, let's say that. Hey, Councilman? All right, we are ready to vote. Are you?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is to approve the amendment of the zoning map of the City of Watertown. If you are in favor of that amendment, you're going to vote aye, and if you're against it, you're going to vote nay. Interim City Manager Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Danforth?
Nay.
Moline?
Aye.
Jurens?
Nay.
Peters?
Nay.
Shuddy?
Nay.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
He votes nay.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. All right, thank you very much. Bruce, did you want to stay on for anything else? All right, thanks a lot, Councilman.
Mayor, could I let, could I tell about the pending application just for the group if they do not receive notice? It's here. So with this property, um, they have put together a PUD, Planned Unit Development, petition that will go before Planning Commission on Thursday. Any no, any neighbor within 250 feet should have received notice on that. So just to be clear, obviously wanted to keep the conversations very separate and give you guys the full authority to discuss the R3. But they did submit for a PUD after the first reading discussion. So that, if anyone wants to stay in the loop with it, just with talking about notice and whatnot, that will be happening on Thurs, this Thursday at the Planning Commission. that will be happening on this Thursday at the Planning Commission meeting.
All right, thank you very much. We will go on to item 10A, a first reading of an ordinance zoning text amendments to swimming pools of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. We will wait a moment to see if people want to depart.
The Planning Commission meeting is at 4:15 PM. The agenda will be posted tomorrow online.
Is that at the new building?
No, that's at, that's here. Okay. It will not be broadcasted live. It will be recorded and uploaded later, too, so. But it will be in this current, not in the new facility, in the new council chambers. The meeting will be in this room, 23 Second Street Northeast.
Okay. Community Development Manager, talk to us about swimming pools.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this is a first reading. This was an amendment that the Planning Commission initiated after the April 24, 2025 Board of Adjustment meeting. There was, just looking at what the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code states, and that is something that's within the International Residential Code, the IRC. The city does not adopt that section of the IRC. So, and there's some real specificities with it that obviously we haven't adopted, so they don't apply. What we have in our ordinance today is that if you do an in-ground swimming pool that requires a permit, you have to have a six-foot fence. What the ISPSC, what that requires is if you, you have a four-foot fence, but if you have a pool cover, then you don't need a barrier at all. So it's kind of our ordinance, the Planning Commission felt, was antiquated because whoever, whenever the original ordinance was adopted, most likely, the pool covers were not as robust as they are today. So it would need to comply with the ASTMF1346 requirements for the pool safety cover to be to code. And so what we did in our ordinance, because our main, the main purpose is to prevent accidental drowning, and a lot of the times, that is for children or adolescents. So we gave two options, and then also added additional safety precautions within the ordinance for all fences or barriers when somebody is installing a pool that requires a permit. Now, if somebody's doing an above-ground pool for the summer, that does not require a permit. So just to keep those things separate. But when there is an in-ground pool, there are the barrier requirements. And so that all, or all barriers or fences, there would always be a fence required, even though the ISPSC does not require a fence if you have a pool cover. We went with a higher standard. And so all access gates will have self-closing and self-lashing devices placed within three inches below, or from the top of the gate, and will be equipped to accommodate a locking device. And that the spacing from in the fence will not allow for a four-inch diameter sphere. And then the two options are that if you have a six, if you have a four-foot, okay, if you have a self-closing cover, you can have a four-foot fence. And if you do not have a self-closing cover, you have to have a six-foot fence, which is what ordinance requires today. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to, actually, no, this is just first reading. Sorry about that. Questions and comments? Councilman Danforth.
So the assumption is that if you have a self-closing motorized pool cover, that people actually use them. Are they required to do it if it's unoccupied? So if I don't use it, if I have it and don't use it, I can have a four-foot fence. That equates to the same scenario of not having one, right? Not having a closure. I look, I look at it, and I got little grandkids, and four feet's like nothing, right? Especially on those fences that are up and down and gone so quick. So I don't disagree with the change, but we're relying on the people that own the pool to close it with the, that's the, that's the fallacy to the proposal.
Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. We are on to item 11C, an approval of a resolution vacation of the portion of the public right-of-way of Fourth Street Southeast between 10th Avenue Southeast and 11th Avenue Southeast. Community Development Manager, Hanton.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a vacation. Vacations only require one hearing with action, so there's not, this isn't a first reading. There will be action on this. You can see on this vicinity map that the petitioners, the new owners of the longstanding Concrete Dakota, which is now Buffalo Ridge Concrete, have purchased this property. And just as new owners in cleaning the property up, are petitioning to vacate this portion of Fourth Street Southeast that is highlighted here in red. It really, it's unimproved. It does serve as access to their property. It separates them currently. And then they also have a conveyor belt that runs across the right-of-way, which is not normal for a private development to have that without an easement in the public right-of-way. So if anything, this, this does clean that portion up, and obviously, there, it serves access to these two properties. We do, we are requesting utility and drainage easements to be memorialized, which this is just showing all the other areas that have been vacated. As you can see, this right-of-way to Highway 81, this is the segment that they're vacating here. But all of these areas, so there's not a lot of connectivity that this does serve other than the route north and south currently. So then, we will be requesting a utility easement for the existing natural gas that runs within the right-of-way. And then we also are requesting a drainage easement on the west side to be able to maintain the, these drainage areas or alleys today. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Jurens, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Questions and comments? Councilman Tepper.
What, is there any safeguards in place that, you know, you said we're going to have a drainage easement there? I mean, is there any way we occasionally check on those? Or, I mean, just knowing that this is kind of off the beaten path and, and is there any way we check on that?
Yeah, so we actually, we, this is a good opportunity to memorialize it so that if the street department or anyone for that matter needs to do any maintenance in there to allow better conveyance of the drainage that takes place there, then yes, at any time.
Follow-up?
Actually, it's not a follow-up. It's a question for Chief Rowland. Can you step up for a second? Any concerns with turnaround or anything like this with fire apparatus?
We are good to go because we can turn around in the parking lot there.
Okay. That was my only concern. Thank you.
Yes, and I, sorry, I did note that on the agenda about the fire access turnaround, but the fire department was able to meet with them, and they do not need an actual easement because they do, they will have sufficient turnaround area for the hydrant located just north of this area being vacated.
I knew that, but I just wanted to make sure the public knew that, that there wasn't any issues, so.
Perfect. No, and I appreciate that, and because I did have it on the agenda item, so that's good clarification.
Councilman Danforth.
One of the advantages, excuse me, I've got this little thing that the dentist put in my mouth, otherwise I sound terrible. One of the advantages of being an old guy on the council is you remember things from the past. Years ago, this was requested of us, and it was denied at the Plan Commission and then ultimately at the council levels. And the owners at that time built the conveyor anyway, crossed the right-of-way. At the time, whether it was at the same time or differently, what we had asked was to swap, to swap that right-of-way, vacate it, so that we could gain one at the, on the very north edge of this property, which is, would be an extension of 10th Avenue Southeast from the east. Because as that corner developed and as we wanted to get more traffic off of the highway, back into those buildings and such that are farther to the west, that was, was denied. It probably has no bearing on this today, but I have to be honest with you. If we're ever going to ask for that, that swap, now's the time to do it. I have no problem giving it up, but it does make a lot of sense for us to get something for it. At least, we should have that request of that 10th Avenue Southeast extension to the west. That would alleviate traffic off of 212, alleviate traffic coming off of Highway 81. So that's, that's where I'm at there. I like the idea of doing it, you know, at this point. But I also like the idea that if we need that, and there come the times with growth in that area, whatever may come there, that we have that right-of-way established where we can put that road in if and when we want it.
Would it, would it work if at this time, just for, as far as, if it needs to be improved, if we would just ask for an access easement so that it's available? Because then you get into who's improving it. I mean, the adjacent landowners typically do. But that also might warrant more discussion with the developer or owner.
Follow-up?
Brandy, I'm not exactly sure what you mean by what you just said. Again, I only want to go back to it because our intent was to get the right-of-way established for westward access. No, westward, from highway, from the, from Highway 81 West.
So like in this...
Keep in mind, we've, and we've always had this issue where we're trying to get traffic off of, or reduce traffic on Highway 212. That was the bypass. That was Jensen Avenue, or whatever that's called, that was further developed. I don't know what's all back there because you can't get there unless you're on Highway 212. I'm saying if there's ever going to be a time for us to talk to the developer, the requester of this, now's the time to do it, see if we can get something in exchange for what we're giving up. That's a large land area. It seems like a reasonable opportunity to get, to do a swap where we actually have a potential benefit in the future, but that's...
City Engineer Peterson, looks like you're thinking about that.
I'd have to look into it a little bit more.
Councilman Tepper?
Did we, Brandy, did we, at one time, did we vacate 10th Avenue?
Yes, right here.
Yep.
Yep.
How long ago was that? Do you remember?
2016. That was my first petition ever.
Oh, okay, you remember that one pretty good, then, so. Could we bring that back as what Councilman Danforth suggested?
Well, so we're, we're talking this portion basically, right? Do you guys see my, my pointer?
Is that, that's 80, that's north, right? North is up?
Yeah. So I would think that we'd actually want to drop it lower so that it was adjacent with 10th Avenue. But like Justin alluded to, you know, we'd have to look at it against where you can have your access points because, I mean, this also might be kind of a tight four-way, especially when you have your two turning lanes in the middle. It already is a little, it's kind of an uncomfortable intersection, turning onto Jensen off of 81 here. And so if this would be the location, I don't know. We still would have Third Avenue as open, Third Avenue and then down almost to 11th as open right-of-ways if we ever did need to see traffic maneuvered around the intersection.
So there was one, one adjoining landowner that was at the Plan Commission meeting, and they didn't totally oppose this. But they would like to see some kind of plan like that worked out because it is very difficult for them to get out on Highway 212 to go east or west, so. Like I said, didn't totally oppose it, but...
Yeah, and the, and the bad thing about Third is it's not really an option at this point because it's wet and drainage areas.
So if we were to, if we were to take back that, let's say if there's, I don't even know if there's a legal way of doing it. I'm just going to ask a strange question. If we were to take back 10th or we vacated it before, that would be at the city's cost, right? We'd have to buy that land back for them?
I mean, if we, if these properties were to develop and ask for a building permit, I mean, that's our plat, replat. We could have them establish the right-of-way at that time. But see, I think where this is vacated, you know how all of these are offset? You can see, I think you'd want it parallel with 10th anyway. So I don't think we'd want to re-establish the portion that's been vacated, but I think we'd want to establish it further to the south. The other thing is, I mean, I don't have GIS pulled up, but I believe this would be, this is split half and half with the owners of Buffalo Ridge and then the owners of the Plaza to the north where Wendy's and all that is, are. So this would, I mean, you would have, you would end up, this would be all on Buffalo Ridge Concrete if we made it parallel with 10th, so. It's not a bad thought.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I just want, this is purely educational as to what had transpired, what we tried to get at one point and failed. But that's only the point of reference, is that there was merit apparently at that time. That's what we pursued as the city. Whether that has merit anymore or not, I don't know. So that's where I'm at on it. I just wanted to let everybody know that incredible history of 10th Avenue.
I, I think it's, that's a good point. And we could, you guys, you guys take it from there, but I mean, we could discuss with the, with the owner. I don't know if they're here.
Councilman Danforth, did you want to make an alternate motion?
I don't think there really is one. I think it's either we... You have to table it, or you deny it pending, or I'm not sure procedurally, but I'm not... I think you should have the discussion internally first to see if it's got merit, any value to us. If it does, then we should determine whether, what that discussion is with, I'm sorry. What that discussion is with, with the requestor here. So I'm not, Mayor, I don't, help me out here. Procedurally, I'm not sure. I hate to vote against it, you know, because personally, I think we should have done a long time ago, but I would like to have gotten what we felt we needed at the swap at the time.
Make a motion to table it.
I would say motion to suspend until the next meeting. Yeah. Can, Councilman Peters, are you okay with that?
That's what I'm doing.
Motion is to suspend action and further hearing on this until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. And that was made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any other discussion on that motion? Councilman Peters?
Do we run any kind of risk on timing to table it for two weeks? Okay, just making sure, I want to be clear.
I think this is primarily just to clean the property up. So, no.
And Councilman Tupper, and I know Manager Hanton, Councilman Tupper and myself were all at that planning and zoning meeting. And the person in question was Phyllis Wiles, who was hoping to maintain her access to the street. So it would be nice to reach out to her. But Councilman Tupper?
Took the words right out of my mouth, so thank you.
Yeah, we have a motion to suspend till the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? All right. We'll just do a voice vote on that because there was no question on that. All those in favor of postponing this until the next regularly scheduled council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. That brings us to an end of our business. Do we have any other business to discuss tonight? Any council member announcements? Start talking fireworks, Councilman Tupper.
Start talking fireworks. God, that's my fun time of the year, so. We will be hosting the 4th of July fireworks at Anza Soccer Field again this year. I will be reaching out to quite a few businesses in town that have been so gracious to help us in the past, help support us. It's just a great evening. God, I can't remember the numbers they said we had last year. Approximately 10,000 or 12,000 people there, I think that was what they told me, so. And those came from both the police department and Lewis Fireworks, who has did many of these shows and they have the knowledge. I don't think they had it growing up their counting heads or nothing, but we'll be reaching out to people. We're going to do a consumer shoot the day before at the Premier softball field. So anybody that bought fireworks, we all know that it is illegal to shoot fireworks within the city limits, but that one is allowed. Then, of course, the show on the 4th, we have inflatables, we have food, we have, they got music playing. It's just a great time. It just brings a lot of people. It's, and what a show. I mean, it is the largest show in the state of South Dakota to my knowledge. I look forward to helping out with it again this year. And I'm like a little kid in a candy store when it comes to that, so. And I think Councilman Beeler said he was going to sing the national anthem for us this year, so.
Any other council announcements? All right, any city manager report? There's no reason to go into executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night and God bless you, Watertown.